I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call the board.
Ms. Don?
Yes.
Here. Sorry. Mr. Hernandez?
President.
Mr. Haddamio?
Present.
Ms. Quintero?
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We'll call.
Ms. Don? Yes. Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio?
Aye.
Aye. First item on the agenda is general functions, Educational Services Incorporated, ESI, and post-retirement. Dr. Bergman and Mr. Encinas?
He's invisible.
Okay.
Good evening, President Crouch, members of the board, Superintendent Holmes and members of the audience. Tonight I have the great privilege to share with you information on the what and why of ESI and post-STAR. And I'm going to pull it up. Okay, wait a minute. There. And. Okay. Thank you. And the purpose of tonight -- oh, where'd it go? Okay, the purpose of this meeting is to explain what district policy states about ESI and post-STAR, as well as share the rationale behind the why. Why do we have ESI and post-STAR employees and what is the beneficial value for the employees and the district? And I'm just wrapping policy, and I know you're all very excited about policy. And it's extremely interesting. Other than Dr. Favella, we're probably the only two people who enjoy looking at policy and sharing it with others. So stay with me, all right? Policy GCQEA came around, I want to say, late 99, early 2000. And it came into place because we wanted to start retaining our highly qualified and experienced employees. As you know, a lot of the baby boomers are moving on into retirement. And it was a cost-effective way to reduce employee cost, but the district also wanted to initiate it to bring them back with their experience. So the policy that is titled "Post-Retirement Employee Option," which is PR EO, was put into place to support certified employees, classified employees, and administrators to bring them back the year that they went into the Arizona State Retirement System. What people don't realize in that first year when people go into the system for the Arizona State Retirement, they can be penalized if they work so many hours. You can retire in the state of Arizona with 80 points or an age of 62 and with five years service. And to retain your retirement pension and return to the district at a lower salary, employees benefit by participating in this policy and they do not jeopardize their ASRS So we looked at ways or groups that would support this, and the Educational Service Incorporated, which is ESI, was a group that was a leader in leasing, and it's basically a leasing process of leasing employees back to us who worked for us previously. Excuse me, they've been in business since 1999. They currently service over about 160 Arizona school districts, colleges, cities, and some towns, leasing employees who want to continue to work but not jeopardize their retirement options. So what is the return-to-work process? Currently, participants in the Arizona State Retirement System who retire and wish to return can return immediately, and they can work part-time or they can work full-time, and they can retain their ASRS benefits and not jeopardize it through the ESI process. By utilizing ESI, a retiring person can return to work immediately, and in other words, they retire and then they receive their benefits and they can increase their pay up to about 70 percent. This allows for the employer, which is SUSD, to retain experienced employees that are planning to retire, as well as save money. And Mr. Encinas is going to share that savings with you. I'll get through the policy and then he will speak more on that. So how does ESI work? Well, there's a process and a system in place for this process. When an individual decides they want to retire, and I'm talking to a lot of them right now because this is usually the time of the year that they're making that decision, and the first step that they have in this process is they meet with their immediate supervisor or principal. And when they meet with that person, they discuss the process about, "I'd like to return. Would you support my retiring and recommend that I come back as an ESI employee?" Once that piece is done, we have a form that they fill out. That comes back to the HR department. It's signed by myself, then goes to the superintendent and the governing board for approval. Once that's approved, then we submit to ESI that we'd like a contract issued to the individual who we want to place at a site or in a department. And then, once they sign that contract with ESI, they start working just like any employee does in the district. It's a process I believe most people understand now, and the system that we have works pretty proficiently. Sometimes people forget, but most of the time we do remind them and they follow through with what it is they have to do. And in bringing back our employees, we don't bring them back at 100 percent. But what I have learned in the last year and looking at other districts who do ESI, some do bring them back at 100 percent. We don't, because that's where our savings is, is bringing them back, not the 100 percent that they made prior to retiring. Sunnyside brings employees back and pays 80 percent less than the ACR, which is the alternative contribution rate that we have to pay to the retirement system, unless that -- if they're on a minimum wage, we cannot go below that identified minimum wage. So we have to look at our classified employees a little differently. The district also saves by having to match the ASRS contribution and insurance benefits. And the average savings per employee is about 20 percent. The district and the employee can terminate on ESI with a 30-day notice, a written notice. And that's one of the things that's different with ESI in that first year, that 30 days is all that can take to move towards termination. So now I'd like to share with you the post-STAR. What happens with post-STAR employees? It's a little different because now that they've completed a year with ESI, they are free then to come back as what we say a regular employee, but as a post-STAR employee. And again, there's policies that we have to follow. Again, they have to be recommended. It's a year-to-year process. Every post-STAR and every ESI employee has to have the support of their supervisor and immediate principal. And I know, when I was a principal on a site, I had several ESI employees who I valued highly and always recommended that they come back. They came back because of their experience and what it is they contributed to our community. That recommendation is the same with ESI. It has to be approved by the superintendent and the governing board before we offer them a contract. And the second-year retiree, because their first year was ESI, now they're in their second year, they are issued a temporary contract. Temporary contracts are something we issue to all post-STAR. They don't fall into that same category as a 10-year, even though there's not 10-year. We still have employees who have been with us 20 years and they have a little more due process than somebody who's on a temporary contract. The post-STAR employee also extends, is extended, all the benefits that any regular employee has, and that consists of they accrue the leave. If they have vacation, they accrue that as well. That typically doesn't happen at the sites, but it does happen with administrators who work in the various departments. And then the insurance benefits are offered to them. They're treated like a brand-new employee, even though they've been with us, say, 30 years, they're still treated as a brand-new employee, and they're hired not less than step one of a position in which they are rehired for. And that can vary for whatever, whether it's a classroom teacher or a classified employee. And what I've provided for each one of these are the certifications for, or the process for certified employees. And certified employees are those librarians, they can be the counselor, they can be a psychologist, they can be a nurse. There's a whole litany of individuals who fall into that certified category. And they also have the same benefits that are agreed upon by the Sunnyside Education Association. So those individuals fall into that classification. And again, they're placed on the appropriate salary schedule for their teaching experience, and we give them 10 years plus one, just like we would any individual from another district. They don't have to start to learn because of that experience that they bring forward. The initial salary determination, again, is reduced by the ASRS, the alternative contribution, that ACR. It is capped, and I'm going to have Mr. Encinas explain why it's capped. But it's capped at 7.43 percent. That is the ACR reduction. And then the district does absorb any increases beyond that. Mr. Encinas, would you like to comment on that and why at this point?
In terms of the ACR?
Uh-huh.
Basically, when the program was approved by the legislature, and this took the legislation in order to allow an individual to collect their pension and then be leased out to a company and come back to work for the school district or the ASRS employer, special legislation was created that allowed that to happen because prior to that legislation, once you started collecting your Arizona State Retirement Pension, you were not allowed to work full-time or risk, what you would do is risk your pension, you'd have to stop your pension. The ESI, the return-to-work, I'm sorry, the ESI program allowed school districts the opportunity and employees to be able to collect their pension and to go back to work for a lease company, and then the year after the lease, go back to work for a school district. Well, so many individuals were taken advantage of it, we'll say individuals and employers were taken advantage of it, that the ASRS is claiming that ASRS employers were hiring many, many retirees that otherwise would have been filled in positions that otherwise would have been filled in by a brand-new employee who would contribute to the Arizona State Retirement System, and the employer would match. So, and this is an example, a new employee when he's hired or continuing, an active employee pays 11.51 percent of their salary into the system, and then the employer matches the 11.51 percent. Well, for a while there, when you hired a retiree, nothing was going, okay? So the ASRS said, "We're losing money." So in essence, they convinced the legislature to create this alternative contribution rate, which is more or less a tax for going back to work as a retiree, and that is paid by the employer. Currently, it's about 9.51 percent. When it was first instituted, it was 7.43 percent, and ASRS has raised that to the current level of about 9.51. We, when we started the 7.43 reduction, as a school district, agreed that we would cap it at that, that the employer's, employees' salary would not be reduced by more than that, the difference would be made up by the school district. So in essence, it is costing us 2 percent to employ a retiree. However, 2 percent compared to 11 percent is a big difference.
Big difference, yeah. Okay, thank you. And this is done yearly. Every year, we look at the retired employee, they choose to come back, and they gain the recommendation from their supervisor or principal, and they're moved, just like any employee, is on a salary schedule. But the ACR is applied each year to what it is that they are making for that year. Okay? And then the certified support staff retirees returning to the classification administration. It's basically the same. They're placed on the salary schedule and salary that's equal to what it is that they made to the position they were in, that they were currently in, if they go back to it. But it's no less than step one of the appropriate salary schedule. One of the things that we discovered when we picked the salary schedules, we had to always look at that first step to make sure they were not making less than that. In no event should the retiree exceed 85 percent. And that you will see in the administration and you'll see it in the classified as well for a full contract that they're working. But again, not less than step one. And the initial base determination is reduced, again, by the ACR, the 7.43 percent, and every year that they work, their salary is looked at just like any employee. They get the same raise and the same adjustments that any employee would who is at the same administrative level.
Except for, okay, because of the ACR reduction, say for instance, a principal is hired back at the beginning, an elementary principal is hired back at step one, 67073. Well, that's step one for the principalship. A returning retiree placed at step one, 67073, when you apply the ACR, it's less than 67073, so they can make less than the 67073. So that's what they make the first year. Say the second year, it's two per our schedule, it's 2 percent more, 67, let's say 68,000. When you apply the ACR to the 68,000, it's less than step one. So step two is 67073, the same amount. So because of the ACR reduction for classified and for administrators, steps one through five are the same because of the ACR application. So a retiree will not see an increase for certified and, I mean, for classified, for administrator and classified, between four and five years.
Their salaries pretty much stay the same.
Because of the ACR application.
Any other questions on that? And then we have our classified. And then this year, what changed with the classified when the minimum wage increased? We had to adjust all our salary schedules, and we're looking at compression issues, but for them, Mr. Encinas just explained, just like for the administrators, we cannot go below that $10 an hour, so we have to adjust and make sure they make at least what minimum wage, which is the $10. In January, it would be the $10.50, and so on as we go through the next four years with those increases. But again, they cannot exceed the 85 percent of the most recent full-year contract that they worked for the district prior to their retirement. The ACR is also applied, and as Mr. Encinas explained, they could see the same salary for a number of years till they get beyond that, if they choose to stay with us longer than that time. And this is where I want to turn it over to Mr. Encinas, because you do not see these because they're very tiny.
Yes, yes, they are.
So, I'm trying, I'm going to see if I can -- yeah, you need to click. Here they are.
The first example there is of a classified individual who's got 30 years of service with the district and basically is topped out of the salary schedule. And grade 13 is the most common classification we have for classified, so this is pretty much a good example of what we're looking at for classified. This person is making $16.99 an hour with 30 years of service, and the current pay is $35,475. Based on information they obtained from ASRS, their average salary for ASRS retirement purposes is $35,604. And that amount is calculated by taking the highest consecutive three-years average. So you take three years, the highest three years, take the average of three years, and that's the salary that you'll base your pension. So when an individual says, "I want to go to ESI, I want to go to ESI, I want to see what it looks like," well, this is what I go through. I say, "Okay, what's your current salary? $35,475." From that amount, we take out ASRS contribution, we take out social security, we take out Medicare, we take out insurance, your share of the insurance. So before income taxes, you're making, even though you're getting paid $35,604, you're making $27,369, okay? Now, if you were to retire, okay, based on your years of service and based on the average salary, your pension's going to be 24,567. Social Security taxes, ASRS contribution is nothing because you already paid ASRS on that amount. Social Security and Medicare, nothing because you already paid Social Security. So basically, from your pension, you're going to net before taxes, 24,567. Going on ESI, okay, then what happens is that your salary with ESI will be 80 percent of your $35,475 less the ACR, which is $26,271. Now, from that amount, you'll pay Social Security, you'll pay Medicare, and then the other thing you'll be paying that first year with ESI, you'll have to pay the full cost of your health insurance. So that's where you take into account that you're going to, we pay 1320 as an employee, as an ESI employee, you'll be paying the full amount, $6,242. So from that $26,271, you'll net before income taxes, $18019. Look at your salary, your pension of 24,567, and your ESI salary of $18019, then basically say, "Okay, if you retire, you'll make $27,369. If you don't retire, you'll make $23,679. If you retire, you'll make $42,000. Take your pick." Okay? And that's what they say, "Okay, it looks like I'm going to retire." So that's the kind of analysis that I presented to the employees. The other thing we also provide is that after that ESI year, if you look at the very bottom, we say after the year, ESI year, and I asked with confirmation with HR, based on our policy, I estimate that you're going to be going to step one of grade 13, which is 1340, which means you'll be making $27,979 as a district employee, up from $26,271 as an ESI employee. So you'll get a raise, okay? And then plus the district will start contributing insurance, you'll get the $4207. So basically, you'll be making $32,186, add the insurance and your new salary as a district employee, plus you're getting a $24,000 pension. So that's the classified. And I think it's pretty much the same rationale, if you look at it, it applies to the classified and the, I mean, certified and administrators.
Mr. Encinas?
Yes, sir.
Is that 80 percent for the $35,000?
It's the --
The 20s, the ESI pay?
The ESI pay is 80 percent of the current pay of $35,475, less the ACR. So you take 80 percent of $35,475, then multiply that times .9257, which is backing up the 7.43, that's where you arrive at the $26,271.
Ms. Don?
Yes, just to clarify, now, they're going to be making a lot more money when they do the first year of ESI.
Correct?
Than they are, than post-retirement. Then the second year, when they do post-retirement, they're making $32,000, and then $42,000 with a total pay of retirement and ESI.
No, you'll make $24,000 of pension, because that's going to stay the same, plus the 32. When they come back off of ESI, they'll make the 24,567, plus the $27,979, and the district's insurance contribution of $4207, which if you take those insurance contributions of $4207 to the salary, it's $32,186.
Right, that's what I said. So it's $32,186 for post-retirement?
Right.
Okay, and it's $42,586 for ESI? If you look up a little higher?
No, no, the $42,586 is the ESI and the ASRS pension.
Correct.
Okay.
All right? Okay, so for one year, you're making $42,000. It comes from different places.
That's it, $42,586, that's all you make.
Right.
The first year.
And then the second, and the second, and then when you do post-STAR?
Right.
You get $32,186.
Right.
Okay, so can I ask you this question? It's always something that I always keep on asking, but for some reason, I forget what the answer is. I apologize for that. But why would a person not stay on, is there a policy where you want to do it for one year? Why not stay on ESI when you're making $42,000?
Well, no, the ESI, you're only making $18,019.
Plus your ASRS.
Yes, which is the 42. When you come back off of ESI?
But why come back?
Because you're going to be making $32,186, plus the 24, which is 56, well, gross before taxes. If you look at the second year, the return-to-work salary. The return-to-work salary is $27,979.
Yes.
Okay? The ESI salary is 26.
Oh, so it's not 32 that you're going to make, you're going to be making more money?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be your pension of 24, plus $27,979, plus the district's going to contribute $4201 to your insurance. That's why they come in.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Ms. Holmes?
Yeah, so just to piggyback on that conversation briefly, is in certain cases, in certain job classes, okay, 80 percent of your salary is more than the step you'll be placed in, particularly for step one. And that's kind of the big controversy in terms of saving money. So it, when you say, "Do you save money going, if, let's say if everyone stayed on ESI, we didn't have post-STAR. Post-STAR is part of our district policy." So that's something, if we want to consider something different, then we'd have to change our district policy to align with the fact that we'd only go with ESI. But once again, depending on your job classification, how many years you've been, and whether you're certified, classified, or administrator, in some cases, the 80 percent will be more than the first step of coming back on post-STAR. The major difference, however, that's not calculated there in many people, is the insurance that you get back from returning. So that's --
Plus certified. Certified, if you go, if you flip to the certified.
Let's --
If you flip to the certified example, a certified employee with 30 years of service, currently making $59,729, and their averageable salary for ASRS pension calculation purposes is $56,652. So if they didn't retire, they'll work for $59,729, less ASRS, less Social Security, less Medicare, so they'll net, and they'll pay insurance, their portion of 1320. So they'll net from before taxes, $46,983. If they were to retire, their pension based on that years of service and the averageable salary is $39,000. Their ESI salary is $44,233, and that's 80 percent of the $59,729. Minus the 7.43 percent, okay? So that's $44,233.
Does that take it off the top right away, or is it?
Yes, well, it takes it off the top. They're not even taxed on it, so it's reduced, okay? So $44,233, less Social Security and Medicare, and then the insurance, the full cost, they'll net for their ESI salary, $44,233. Of that amount, they'll net $34,608. So that net of $34,608, plus their pension of $39,090, their ASRS pension plus the ESI pay is $73,698. So again, would you rather keep on working and make $46,900, or retire and keep on working and make $73,000? I'll keep on working, right? So in essence, they're making $26,000 bucks more by retiring. The year after that ESI though, okay, since we treat certified employees like new hires, okay, they fall under the new hire guidelines for certified, which means that we'll take your years of service?
10 years.
10 years, plus one, and place you on the salary schedule. So this person with an MA degree would be placed at step 11, $43,000, less the ACR. That comes out to $37,954. I think. I'm looking at my spreadsheet, but I think it's --
Mr. Encinas? You had a question?
At the bottom of the year, after this, the break-even calculation down there, that basically tells you, "Okay, I want to wait a year to retire." Well, if you wait a year, it's going to take you 29 years to make up, in other words, if I don't retire at 30, I'm going to wait one more year and get a bigger pension, and your pension's going to be instead of $39,090, it'll be $39,989. So I'll say, "Okay, my pension's going to be $899 more a year for the rest of my life." Well, it's going to take you 29.71 years to make up the loss of double-dipping that first year.
Ms. Quintero has a question.
So for the insurance that you're taking out, they pay that to ESI?
They pay it to us, to COBRA. The COBRA, as an ex-employee, okay, retired employee, they're subject to COBRA rules, which entitles them to continue their coverage with their former employer up to 18 months at our rates.
But I thought ESI had insurance for their employees.
They do. They do. But it's a lot higher than ours, you know, a lot less benefit coverage.
Oh, okay. Ours is better? Okay.
Mr. Hernandez, did you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Hi there. I think my biggest question is, what have been the trends that we've seen? I know that we've had vacancies, especially in our teaching position, but what have been the trends in the non-teaching positions for folks coming back? Have we seen an increase? Have we seen a fairly steady level, or have we seen a drop in the employees choosing to take these options after they've completed their service, either going through ESI or post-STAR or both?
Hello, Mr. Hernandez. I think, you know, it's been steady in the sense that we have individuals who have retired and say, they're 60, and they retire after 30 years, and then they continue to work for five more years. And then at 65, they decide, "Okay, I'm done." And then at sixty-five, they decide, okay, I'm done, and they move on. But we have seen a steady group of individuals who are retiring and going into ESI, and then we, then moving into post-R. I don't believe it's as high as it has been when it first started, but we, like this year, I believe we have ten ESI employees. It's on one of the slides, and they will move over, they're all asking to move over to post-R, and we have only about five post-R employees who are saying, okay, it's really, I'm really ready to retire and not work.
Ms. Turel?
Mr. Sinis, does the state subsidize a retiree for insurance?
Depending on whether they qualify for the subsidy, okay? Like in my case, and I don't recall what the benefit is anymore, but if you continue coverage with your employer, your former employer, or hired back with your employer, and that employer is an ASRS employer, then the state will provide a subsidy of a hundred and fifty dollars per month for single coverage. If you have a dependent, it'll increase to two hundred and sixty dollars per month. And that's given in the form of an actual cash subsidy every, once every six months, in January to July. So this is, a retiree will pay for the insurance and be reimbursed the full out-of-pocket cost, up to two hundred and sixty dollars a month for dependent coverage, a hundred and fifty bucks a month for individual coverage.
Was that taken into consideration with the numbers as well?
No. No.
I have a question about ESI and post-R. Do we have any sense of whether ESI and/or post-R block qualified, younger employees that are moving up into positions? Pardon?
An example? Are you like certified or...?
Uh, well, uh, let's use administrators. If you have an assistant principal that is blocked from moving to principalship because you have a principal who's post-R, for instance, do we lose qualified candidates internally because they go somewhere else? Because there's no place to move, for them to move up the ladder? I know this is hard to quantify, but I'm just curious if it's...
I'll answer, yes. I mean, that's a candid and very real response, and it happens in each, all three categories. I mean, it's not, I don't want to say it's widespread, but let's give an example. Start with classified. So you have an office manager who's been retired and there for a while. You have a lower-grade attendance clerk that would like to move up, and the person's been there for ten years as a post-retiree, doing a good job, don't get me wrong. It's not an issue of people not doing the quality work, it's just in every single category. That's one example in the classified, where I've heard anecdotally, got a liberal to become a, move up within the school, but I don't see the, you know, this person retiring. So there is that dynamic at all levels at the, go certified. In most cases, with the teaching certification, when it's a teaching position, it happens to be a lucrative position, like a position that's very hard to fill, and could be, doesn't give one example, let's say PE teacher, where it's kind of someone that also wants to be a head coach. And so part of our preference has been to hire coaches who are actually working in the school, particularly at the high school level. So if there's, you know, someone that's been retired, and you want to actually be the head ex-coach, and you want to be a PE teacher, you may not have a spot. Administration goes back to your point, principalship. There's so many people that want to become administrators and principals. Not that everyone's ready, and we have our principals that do a great job, but that's another one where, at what point will there be opportunities, or they'll have to search elsewhere? And a lot has to do with our size. So that's just a dynamic of size, right? So you look at larger districts, there's always much more churn and opportunities. Here, it's kind of a wait, wait your turn, and some are patient, but that is a dynamic. So I can't, I won't say it's widespread, but it does occur in all three categories, and those are three examples.
Ms. Turel?
No, no, you go ahead.
By the same token, how does it affect us from recruiting? You know, we're paying these other salaries here, but yet we don't have money here to pay the new teacher or the classified person. Has that had any effect?
Well, if you look at the cost comparisons of hiring a new, brand-new employee versus hiring a return-to-work retiree, you'll see in every case, except maybe, well, let's look at the examples for, they were part of, were they part of the PowerPoint?
You have them, they're not part of the PowerPoint.
That's right. This one?
Why don't we pay that new teacher four, thirty-two cents?
It all depends, okay? If you're looking at recent, I mean, Dr. Burman can attest to it. One of the, the problems we've had as employers, as a school district, is being able to attract teachers. I mean, whether they're brand-new teachers or teachers with experience. So in the comparisons that I provided, I show what it would cost to hire a return-to-work retiree as a teacher, and compare that salary that we will pay that person, giving the same amount of credit of years of service as a brand-new person with the same experience and same degree. And we save forty-six hundred bucks by hiring the retiree versus a brand-new, out-of-district employee with the same years of experience.
I don't talk to somebody...
Now, brand-new though, if you look at that example, it costs us...
Certified teacher, zero, you teach...
Forty-three hundred dollars more, forty-four dollars more to hire the retiree rather than a brand-new teacher with zero experience, out of college, at thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. So basically, we're saying, is the years of experience worth forty-three hundred, forty-four hundred dollars?
Actually, Ms. Don, you had a question?
Yes, that one brought me another one, but before I do that one.
Oh, sorry, ma'am.
So, you know, we're saying that a person that, one, it's anecdotal, that a person does not go ahead and retire, then the next person can't get that position. But, you know, you kind of wonder too, would that person have ever retired? Even post-R, ESI, or done any of that, unless that opportunity was there? I'm not sure if we have enough to go on to say that that person would have retired outright. Or did they go ESI or post-R just because it was more feasible economically, they're making extra money, but they didn't have any thought even of doing any kind of retirement until they were shown that, hey, retire, and you can make more money? So, you know, you kind of wonder that too. They might not have ever even thought of retiring.
Especially nowadays, when you think about the fact that, say, a teacher that gets hired, and we'll say it took him a couple of years of degree, hired at twenty-three years of age, okay? And is a teacher for twenty-five years, been an administrator for five years. They're thirty years of service, they're fifty-three years of age. They're not ready to retire.
They're not ready to retire.
Okay? But this affords them the opportunity to be able to retire, get additional compensation, yes, still keep on working because it's still going to be productive at age fifty-three.
Yeah. Right. And as far as teachers, yeah. And as far as teachers are concerned, you know, we're hurting for teachers. And so it's not like if we keep a teacher, it's going to hurt us in getting another teacher fresh from the U of A. But that was another question that I had. Let's say somebody moved here from... I was going to say continental, but I won't, I won't say continental. Wait a minute, let's not say that one. Let's say somebody moved here from, from Rio Rico. Okay, somebody moves here from Rio Rico and wants to work here, but they already have their points, their eighty points. Can we come working at Sunnyside and do ESI right off the bat? They didn't have to have been here before?
They would have to retire, say they retire, right?
Yeah, they just retired.
They apply ESI, and they tell ESI, I'd like to work at Sunnyside. ESI will contact us and say, we have a teacher for you, wants to apply and work for you under ESI, because he can't come over for us directly without, if they're retired.
No, no, but I realize that. But they can go to ESI, and they come here the very next year.
Yes.
We've had teachers who have done that. They retired from a surrounding district, and they're interested, and they let us know that. And if they get picked up by ESI or a principal decides to hire them, we still have to go through that same process of approval.
Right.
But they can also be hired in the same way current employees can.
And then after the ESI, you will treat them as a brand-new employee, I mean, you hire, the same rules apply.
Okay. So then let me ask the two of you. Is there anything negative that you can see from us affording our employees ESI or post-retirement?
No. It's still cause-effective. If the employee benefits.
Yeah.
We used to be able, we used to benefit more before, with the ACR.
Yeah, right.
We used to benefit more, but we're still benefiting, so.
But I think the ACR was good because it calmed everybody down. Because before the ACR, I remember all the arguments, from even some of our board members did not like it because they were hearing the arguments that we were going to kill social security in the state, ASRS rather, in the state. And so it was kind of a nice little compromise, I think. And so, yes, we now have to put into ASRS, but I thought it was a good compromise. We don't get as much, we still have to pay a little bit, but it's still a good compromise because then we don't harm ASRS.
Ms. Holmes?
I think there's a couple of debates that are going on, and again, not to bring closure to them today, because I think it's something we want to ponder, whether we're going to look at our current policy. So one debate that's been going on is, do we actually do a post-R? Do we keep everyone in ESI? Let me just kind of play that out, because that's one policy decision. Let's just make sure, let's just, everyone that retires comes back only on ESI, we're not going to do a post-R. In the case of certified salary schedule, only one where it actually, there's no cost savings. In other words, whether we go on ESI, or whether we do ESI, or we do our current policy, it's costing us more than a new employee. Because whether they come, again, so we're either paying them eighty percent of their salary, or they're coming back at step eleven, at which case, that's still above the starting teacher pay. So neither of those two options, we follow current policy, we're keeping on ESI, saves us more money compared to a new employee. So I just want to make that factual, because that's a really good distinction to make, particularly in the certified.
And that's what my question was.
Yeah, and administration and classified play out a little bit differently. But in the certified realm, we're not saving any money with either of the two options because we start them in a higher pace. I just want to kind of make that point if we're debating those two issues. The other issue that's come up was the capping of employees on post-R, which gets to the potential of people not being, having opportunities. I don't think there's, you know, having, yeah, opportunities to move upwards. And so that's, but our current policy does not speak to that as well. So that's a consideration, we're going to have to revamp policy. But that was something that was discussed, at least in different discussions that I've had, relative to this upcoming study session. So for example, do we say after year five, something is different? Do we open it up competitively? So you get, or you get three years, and after three years, we open it up only internally. If there's no applicants, you can continue. So I mean, these are just ideas that are thrown out, again, not for decision-making, but I think those are the two areas that we have to kind of really play out in our minds if this information is going to be used to influence a new policy decision. But I think those are the two that have been out there looming. I think the first one's easier, because I don't think there's a, if it's a cost savings issue, I don't think that's debatable, only if you look at sort of administrative and classified. But I think the cap one is worth consideration if we're going to really look at the potential of upward mobility.
And we also, from a district standpoint, we have a lot of positions that would not be filled, or we'd have difficult time filling if we weren't using post-R and ESI. So, you know, from a district standpoint, I think it's really an advantage just to be able to fill those positions.
Can I say something?
Ms. Turel?
I just wanted to, you know, I understand all of that, but we do want to give experience to people who are trying to move up, and they will never get that opportunity. Because on most applications, it's like, experience, you know, how much experience have you had? Well, none, because I haven't had the chance to get any. So that's also something that we have to look at to maybe have new talent gain experience. I mean, I'm just saying.
Ms. Holmes?
I'll just, I'll throw in an idea, just for a little debate. So let me play out kind of the idea of a cap with the governing board. One consideration could be, and again, this could be a moot point, because we may decide we're going to keep things as is. Well, let's say, let's use five years, just because I like the number five. So number, so after five years, you know, coming back from post-retirement, after you've done ESI, you're post-retirement in a position, we have a cap, meaning after that fifth year, we open up the position, but only to internal applicants. This way, so not externally, not outside the district. So if we're really going to say it's for upward mobility within the organization, then I would think we'd be speaking on both sides of their mouths if we opened it externally. So one idea of consideration would be, after X amount of years, it gets opened up internally. And so if no one applies, then that person can continue in a post-retirement as long as we continue to, every year, put it out there for people who have an interest in it, would apply. And then we can set a bar, we can do nothing, we can set it three years, we can set it five years, we can set it one year, but it kind of gives an opportunity for those that really want to apply, that would apply internally. The competitive process still could give favor, though, to that individual. I wouldn't want that individual not to be able to compete for continuation. It doesn't mean you're done, it just means if there's other people of interest, let's open up. That's just, I'm throwing that out as an idea for consideration from a policy standpoint. So if there are people that are considering upward mobility, that doesn't necessarily block them, but it also allows people to continue if there's no one interested in that position.
Ms. Don?
That's an interesting idea. What I would like to see is, you know, as we continue to explore this, because I know this is just a study session right now, but as we continue to explore this, I would like it to be taken to IBB and have them explore it also, and have them to, you know, look at the pros and the cons. What are the pros and cons of doing this five-year cap? And just to get an idea, you know, from them also, you know, that way we get some, a lot of people maybe saying something that, yes, it's really great because of blah, 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 or you guys didn't think about this, blah, blah, blah. And so sometimes, we do think so quickly, we don't think about something that we got to, you know, find it, you know, retweet it, as they say nowadays. Not that other kind of tweet, though.
Tweak.
Tweak. Not that. Tweak. Yes. Yes. Let's see, you know, because we have a lot of heads put together, put a lot of heads together, letting us know what are some of the possibilities that are good, but also what are some things that we're not thinking about? I would like to see it go back, go to IBB, not go back, because we haven't done anything with it. But just go to IBB, and just to get an idea of some of their thoughts about what would occur if we did a five-year cap. And also have Dr. Berman and Hector and Sinis also take a better look at the numbers and what that would all look like.
Well, it might be interesting also to get a viewpoint of those that are post-R already, and those that are not post-R. I don't know what our makeup of IBB is, but I think we've got a significant number of post-R in IBB. So are they going to have a different opinion than those that are not post-R? No?
Not anymore, we still have some.
Okay.
But that's not that many.
I was just curious if it was...
But IBB usually goes out to the other people, not just around there. So you're right, you know, that IBB go to the post-R people and get some kind of an indication.
Yeah, because I wanted to, this one, this one kind of shows you where we're at with the sixteen, seventeen. You know, we have twenty-nine individuals who are on their ESI year, and we have a hundred and ten who are in their post-R. It just gives you the breakdown of where they're at. And some will be, some post-R will be rotating out, and then the twenty-nine will be rotating into a post-R year.
In terms of looking at the savings, one thing that I didn't do here, to calculate the savings, is figure out what... Yeah, in terms of looking at savings, one thing that I didn't do here to calculate the savings is figure out or compare, say, what is a post star person making now as a post star versus what would they have made now had they not retired? Okay, so that, that savings is not reflected here. It's really compared, comparing to, to new employees. So that'd be interesting to see, have he, had that person not retired, what would they be making? And to compare that to savings there, because that's continued savings, that we've experienced year after year after year.
That's, that's a good question.
Well, if they don't retire, they'll lose money.
Yeah, but it'll cost, would it cost us?
How much would it cost us, yeah, you're right.
Any more questions from the board, or any more comments?
Mr. Crouch?
Uh, Mr. Hernandez?
Uh, if I may, one more quick question?
Certainly.
Um, Mr. Holmes, when would be the ideal time for us to look at if we were gonna make a change, making it so that way it doesn't interfere with either the hiring process and we give time for employees to know what the changes would be? Would it be this year, uh, at the end of the school year? Do we think we need to come back in August? Like, when would be an ideal time if we were to look at making serious policy changes around our ESI and post star, uh, policies? What would be the, the best time district-wise to actually do the changes?
Mr. Holmes?
Sure, I, I, uh, Mr. Hernandez, I feel it's too late for this year. It'd be something that we would have to implement for next year, give ample time to discuss with employees the implementations, particularly those who are, who are exploring that. And we'd probably have to look at some type of grandfathering or looking, you know, it depends on what, if we even go down this road, I think the number of years that we look at would have to be taken into consideration, and what does that mean for someone that's been past that five years? Do they lose out? Do we grandfather them? Do we start at year one? So there's a lot of, of what-if scenarios that would, would have to play out. Uh, but I, I would say we're, we're too late to really do anything this year. It'd be something we'd implement for the following school year.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you.
But, uh, I just wanna thank you for the, uh, for all the information that, uh, I think we've all gained from it, and, uh, it's, it can be a tough subject. And, you know, obviously, uh, we have a lot of valued personnel that are post star and ESI in the district, and they really contribute to the district. I wanna thank them all, and thank you for the presentation.
That's one of the things I tell folks when I meet them, is if you're gonna retire and quit working, forget it. If you're gonna retire, just in, in, just mentally, because physically and mentally, as far as, you're still gonna keep on providing a hundred percent, and, and your supervisor will be expecting a hundred percent, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Crouch? I move the, we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio?
Yes.
Ms. Cantero?
Aye.
Mr. Crouch?
Aye. Study session is adjourned.